The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coder. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Conway. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Carter. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present. I ask everyone in chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. You know, the presence of the Rosati Kane Singers signifies the kickoff of the holiday and the Christmas season for the Board of Aldermen. And we're always really happy to see them come through. This year, the kickoff for our summer season of healthy eating, we are so blessed to have with us today. Members of Ford Elementary School, some of the parents and kids are here with us today, along that are all part of the Beyond the Bell after-school program that was created by Karia Vercel and David Sanders and BJ. And they have a three-minute demonstration that they want to give us, and then they have, they're going to be over in the Kennedy Room directly following the Board, and I really welcome all of you to go over there and see what these young folks have achieved. They've done some great things. Karia, would you like to take the three minutes and do your... Come on up.
Hello, my name is Johanna Simpson. Today I want to share with you what I have learned about garden celery. A tossed garden celery is an excellent source of vitamin C, a nutrient that's absent in most other fast foods. It supplies a good amount of vitamin A for healthy skin and better vision as it fosters just enough fiber. Thank you for your attention and your support.
Hello, my name is Kiari Simpson, and I am here to talk about celery. Like green stalks growing parallel topped with leaves. Welcome to the mobile market student grown, student own.
Karia, did you want to say hi? Tell people invite them over.
Good afternoon, or good morning. We would like to invite everybody here, friends, family, workers, everybody here at City Hall to come and really embrace the students of Ford Elementary. These are positive images of what's really going on in St. Louis Public Schools. We believe that we should tell our own story. There are a lot of great kids that are doing some wonderful things. These children happen to participate in a program that's called Beyond the Bell, and Beyond the Bell is an enrichment program. It's an after-school program that teaches children and their families how to adopt healthy lifestyles. How we do that is through introducing them to fresh fruits and vegetables, and then how to prepare them. So what you will enjoy in the Kennedy Room, Room 208, is samplings of all of the different things that we have harvested in our garden, and they have been prepared by the students, and we hope that you are able to join us and ask them questions about what it is that they do, what they have learned, and they are so, so eager to share. Thank you, guys, and we look forward to seeing you.
That's excellent. Let's give Karia a big round of applause. Thank you. Going to look forward to them every year. Introduction of our guests. Any introduction of our guests? Aldermen from the 24th?
Mr. President, I'd like to welcome Paige Selby with Ameren Ue.
Alderwoman from the 14th?
I'd like to recognize Jeff Hans from the Carpenter's Union, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73.
Alderwoman from the 4th?
I'd like to have as my special guest Mr. Leroy Grant, and also, y'all keep your seats, Patrick Brown from the Mayor's.
Alderwoman from the 26th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to announce as my honored guest, the former Comptroller of Arizona, resident of 26th Ward, and also the former director of Mocan, Eddie Hassan. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Ben Murray.
Any other introductions? Any other... Alderwoman from the 9th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my honored guests today Maureen McDonald and her guest, if she'll stand up. And then also Rachel Smith and Mary Pat Carl from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Any other introductions? Alderwoman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Ms. Mavis Thompson, Lyson Collector in City St. Louis, and her staff.
All right, welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. School teachers sure have changed since I was in school. Sister Agatha didn't look anything like that. I'd still be in school. As we are gathered here on May 29th, it was on this day in 1849 that one of our great presidents, probably one of our greatest, the greatest, Abraham Lincoln stated that "You can fool some of the people all the time, all of the people some of the time, but you can't fool all of the people all of the time." Apparently, he never played cards with the Alderman from the 23rd.
Alderwoman from the 18th, recognized on approval of the minutes. Alderwoman from the 18th. Alderwoman from the... You recognize on approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to approve the minutes from April 15th, 28th to May 15th.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 18th, second by Alderwoman from the 11th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have and has honored the mayor the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Loop East Community Improvement District. The appointment of Dan Tierney, a resident of the 28th Ward whose term will expire on April the 1st, 2016. The reappointment of John Russell, a resident of the 28th Ward whose term will expire on April the 1st, 2018. The reappointment of John Wright, a resident of the 28th Ward whose term will expire on April the 1st, 2018. The reappointment of Kevin Farrell, a resident of the 28th Ward and whose term will expire on April the 1st, 2018. On behalf of the Loop East Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Loop East Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Loop East Community Improvement District.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 28th, second by Alderwoman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District. The appointment of Daniel Mercurio, who resides at 2866 Highway FF, whose term will expire on May the 31st, 2018. The appointment of Julie Baker, who resides at 44 Dugan Court, whose term will expire on May the 31st, 2018. The appointment of Leslie Havens, who resides at 3227 Missouri Avenue, whose term will expire on May the 31st, 2018. On behalf of the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointments to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 7th, second by Alderwoman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board. The appointment of Emily Andrews, a resident of 13th Ward whose term will expire on May the 11th, 2019. The reappointment of Patrick Justice, a resident of the 8th Ward whose term will expire May the 11th, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 2nd, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move that we confirm the appointments to the Clean Energy Development Board.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 2nd, second by Alderwoman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's the report of city officials.
With dispensal line items 7, 2 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 73, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Stoll at Prim, causing it to be a three-way stop intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Stoll at Test and causing it to be a three-way stop intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Lothborough at Macklin and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance pertaining to the Maya Angelou both place located at 3130 Hickory Street, having as subject matter the designation of the property as a city landmark and containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill 77, sponsored by Alderman Coder, an ordinance approving the additional property petition of owners of real property seeking the additional of real property described as the Le Clees Landing Sub-District to be added to the existing district known as the Downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the addition of real property as described as the Le Clees Landing Sub-District to be added to the existing district known as the Downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance pertaining to the allocation and approval of use of increased net position of parking funds amending Section 2 of Ordinance 69809 to include a provision and acting in lieu thereof a new section pertaining to the same subject matter providing for the annual allocation of funds for the Office of Financial Empowerment. Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing a supplemental appropriation amending Ordinance 69736, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2014 through 2015, appropriating and setting apart projected excess general and special fund revenues to meet current expenses of the city government for the current fiscal year in the amount of $6,700,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 80, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, an ordinance repealing Ordinance 69159, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any 3 a.m. closing permits for any currently non-3 a.m. licensed premises within the boundaries of the 28th Ward liquor control district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 81, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services via the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging to accept a contract from the Missouri Alliance of Area Agencies on Aging in the amount of $15,000 to expend those funds for benefit enrollment activities for adults with disabilities and senior citizens and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Director of Human Services, the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Comptroller with recommendation of the Director of Department of Human Services via the Homeless Services Division to accept and enter into and execute grant agreement awards to provide for reimbursement or payment to the city for United States of America's share of eligible costs incurred for city-approved eligible programs, furthering the work of the continuum of care under the grant agreement and future continuum of care grant awards and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 73, 74, and 75. To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 77, 78, and 79. To the Health Committee, Board Bills 81 and 82. And to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 76 and 80. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill 11, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for 302 North Kings Highway. Board Bill 22, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2209 through 2211 Olive.
2217.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2209 through 2217 Olive, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 25, sponsored by Alderman Carter, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 5800 Goodfellow and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from E multiple-family district, dwelling district, and H area commercial district, and the J industrial district to the H area commercial district only for properties on North Grand, North Spring, Lindell, West Pine, Mall, North Spring, and Le Cleed, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 42, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2035 Lucas and 2030 Delmar, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 47, sponsored by Alderman French, an ordinance recommended to change the zoning of property from A single-family dwelling district to the F neighborhood commercial district for properties on Marcus and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 5, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance pertaining to parking within the 4500 Wichita Avenue Residential Park District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 4500 Wichita Avenue Residential Park District containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate travel on the westernmost east-west alley in City Block 3765 North bounded by Fountain, Albert, Enright, and Kings Highway. Board Bill 44, sponsored by Alderman...
Have some more, or...
Board Bill 44, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Alderman Valmer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public work and improvement project for the Columbia and Southwest Bridge reconstruction over Union Pacific Railroad involving the demolition of the Columbia Bridge and the Southwest Avenue Bridge, and the construction of one new bridge and associated roadway improvement, appropriating the total estimated for planning, engineering, design, property acquisition, and the Columbia and Southwest Bridge reconstruction over the Union Pacific Railroad project of $3 million and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 45, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public work improvement project for the Germania Street overlay and pedestrian improvements from Gravois to Interstate 55, authorizing and directing the city by and through its Board of Public Services to let contracts and provide for the design, construction, materials, and equipment for the Germania Improvement Project and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 48, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission, making appropriation for a payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses, including the lease purchase agreements involving the parking division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Parking Facilities, Office of Financial Empowerment, Argyle Parking Facility, Shuttle Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking Facility, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facility, Couples Parking Facilities, and the Justice Parking Facility, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of $17,530,84 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 50, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, an ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Lothborough at Field, causing it to be a three-way stop intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, an ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Wabash at Lindenwood Place and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensal line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 6, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6215 Marmaduke and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 8, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4231, 4233, and 4241 Gibson and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 9, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4100 through 08 Lindell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 10, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4245 West Pine and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 12, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4526 through 4628 Olive. Board Bill 21, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 6200 through 12 North Broadway. Board Bill 23, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3531 through 3537 South Kings Highway and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 24, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5921 Southwest, 4405 Filet, and 3279 through 3283 Alfred, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 26, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2819 McNair, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 27, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3324 Wisconsin, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1904 Witnell, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 29, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3321 through 3323 Domenel Place, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 30, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4125 Russell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 31, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4218 Cleveland, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 32, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4247 through 4249 Russell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 33, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1817 through 1819 Thurmond, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderwoman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 18th, second by Alderwoman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With dispensal line item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bill 40, 41, and 55.
Alderwoman from the 18th, you recognize on third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderwoman from the 18th, second by Alderwoman from the 13th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. I didn't hear. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coder. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-six aye votes, no-no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderwoman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Dispense with line item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 40, 41, and 55.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session and fix his signature here too, to the end that these may become law. I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. With dispensal line items 21 and 22, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, 8:30 AM Ways and Means Committee meeting. Tuesday... I'm sorry, Monday, Monday, June the 1st, Ways and Means Committee meeting at 8:30 AM in the Kennedy Room. Tuesday, June the 2nd, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 8:30 AM in the Kennedy Room. Also on Tuesday, Public Utilities meeting at 12 o'clock PM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, June the 3rd, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9 AM in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, no meetings. Friday, full board meeting, 10 AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 8th.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Madam Clerk, could you add the Treasurer's Office to the Wednesday meeting of Ways and Means at 9 AM?
So noted.
That was at the request of the Treasurer.
I was also just told that we have some Boy Scouts joining us up here. I don't know if they're still up there or not, but if they are, just give them a round of applause. If there are any fellow scouts out there, you may want to let us know about it during announcements and welcome them. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 14th.
I'd like to remind everybody, since tomorrow, weather forecast over the weekend is rainy. If you haven't gotten out to the St. Louis History Museum to see a walk in 1875, and it's a fantastic exhibit, get out and look at it. It's really, really centered on St. Louis and gives you an idea of what we looked like in 1875.
Actually, good. Any further, Alderman from the 13th?
Members of the board, I would like to request a moment of silence for the passing of Martin Dugan, the longtime editor of the Globe Democrat, and of course, the longtime provocateur of Donnybrook, one of our premier current events programs on Channel 9. He passed away May 27th. And I remember he was honored here upon his retirement.
Yes, and we made him a honorary member of the board.
Yes, I remember I was sitting there when you did that. So I would like to request a moment of silence.
All right, if everyone who's able to stand, please stand for a moment of silence for a friend and certainly of St. Louis icon, Martin Dugan. Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow, at Arsenal &amp; Jefferson, they start their series of... the Benton Park neighborhood starts a series of concerts from 4 to 9 o'clock. It'll be a free concert at Benton Park, so if you're not doing anything, come by and enjoy. And there's a tent up too, so if there's a little rain, you know, you can still come under the tent.
All right, excellent.
...is covered too, so.
All right, Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This weekend is the Central West End House Tour. It's on Pershing Place this year. You can access that right off Euclid, just a block north of Maryland, so I encourage you all to come out and see the lovely homes of the Central West End. You can get your tickets online, or you can show up and buy them at the door. So, hope to see you this weekend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that tomorrow is our third part of our Pet in the Neighborhood Fair. Any animals being spayed or neutered have to be there before 8 AM. There will be a vaccination clinic between 2 and 4 at 8709 Riverview at the corner of Riverview and McLaren. Also, we'll do the same on June the 3rd. I also would like to say a happy birthday to my mother. She can no longer watch us at the Board of Alderman because she can't figure out how to get it on her cable, but I'll take a little video once it's on YouTube and say happy birthday to my mother.
All right, a happy birthday. Alderman from the 11th, I don't know if you had anything you were standing earlier. All right, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. First, I'd like to share with the members of the Rules Committee. I'll always try to give you a two-week notice for our meeting, so the next meeting will be scheduled for June 10th at 10:30 AM, and that's a Wednesday. Also, we have a very, very great foundation and philanthropic entity with Enterprise Corporation here in our region, and as you know, they announced all their giving the other day, a total of $22 million, and we were blessed that the local Urban League received $1 million of that. And I wanted to just say thank you to Enterprise, because they've done a great job, so let's give them a hand.
It'll help a lot of families.
Yes, and watch me for the next two weeks. It's time for me to talk about the salute to women. A lot of you all have been to that event. It is now a ticketed event. It will be June 19th at the Renaissance Hotel. 14 women out of this region will be honored. And one that I've known for many, many years and have been close to her family is Angela Wimbush. She will be recognized. And one of the people who are coming in for the event is somebody I've liked all my life, Richard Roundtree. He's already confirmed that he's coming. Thank you.
Alderman from the 20th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that tonight is Lo-Fi Cherokee. Just south of Cherokee &amp; Jefferson at the former St. Matthews Church will be showcasing 18 small local businesses and 18 small local bands. So if you want to come out tonight at 8 PM, it would be a lot of fun.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that on Tuesday, June 2nd, 8:30 in the morning till 12:30, is the City of St. Louis Office of Diversity and Inclusion their first leadership symposium. It's at the Missouri Botanical Gardens. It's open to the public. The Honorable Mike McMillan will be speaking, Anna Crosland, David Neuberger, Tony Thompson, so a lot of folks will be speaking to try to present other communities' points of view. So I encourage you all to attend. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Further announcements. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that the Alderman from the 21st and the 22nd be excused for necessary actions.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
I move that the Board of Alderman adjourns until Friday, June 5th, 2015, 10 AM.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Stand adjourned.